How many years ago was this?
I probably went to that.
He went last.
Sorry to disrupt the great people conversation, but we need to call the meeting to order. It's the September 20th, regular meeting. Let the record show that all are present with the exception of Dr. Prater. And we'll begin this evening's meeting, first of all, asking you to silence your cellphones if you haven't done so already, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll ask for any, are there any modifications to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the president's report, and the president is absent, and in his absence, I will not be giving a report, so you can thank me later. Superintendent's report, please.
We, we will report a little bit on our struggles with enrollment at, on the agenda as far as seeking new staff, but we're sensing some of a little bit of that going on in our district. Another thing, the board asked to meet the facilitators on the operating side, and we feel we have some really top-notch facilitators, two of them, and at this time, I'm going to ask them, first of all, we have Pam Holmes, who is a facilitator working for the elementary operations, so if you'd stand up, and, and Dr. Hackenworth, do you have anything to say as far as responsibilities related to that?
Sure. You can come out.
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I, I do just want to speak briefly about Pam's experience, so you kind of know what sort of background she has. Come on up, Pam. Pam has been in the, she was a classroom teacher for six years, and she, she was in grades, first grade and third grade. She's been administrator for 18 years. Brings a great deal of experience to the district. Three years, she was a K-6 principal at Fair Play. Eleven years, she was a K-4 principal at NYXIA. Two of those schools went on to be Gold Star schools. She was a year as a K-5 assistant principal in the Conley, the Conley School District in Texas, okay? Three years as a pre-K-4 principal at Stratford. So, a wide range of experiences that she, she brings to the district. She's also very active in MAESP, NAESP, and has done a lot of aspiring principal workshops throughout the state. So, we're really excited to have her. I also want to note that she was the McDonald's Employee of the Month for February 1983. And so, I didn't want to leave that out as we kind of roll through some of her accomplishments. I'm in such trouble tomorrow. But, you know, her duties, and she, she's been off to a great start. She provides our principals with professional development and leadership with regard to their school improvement initiatives. She assists the principals with the delivery of teacher professional development and instructional strategies that they're working towards. She's spent a lot of time recently sitting with principals one-on-one and, and combing through their data. We have a wealth of data at our fingertips, and she's helping them to better understand how to look at that data and how to use it with their teachers to inform instruction. And that's really the name of the game. It's one thing to have the data, and now Pam's really helping us to use it. And she's also responsible for some of the core planning with our P-to-G initiative. So, we are really fortunate to have Pam on board, and I know I'm learning from Pam, so really excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Any questions?
Quick question.
Pam, come on back.
And, and, I don't, you don't have to answer this. Ben can answer it, but, I mean, is there an idea or the, a thought that, in terms of the data, because that's certainly such a key component of, of what we're trying to do, is we've got this data and being effective around using it, is, is there going to be a report back to the board on, on how principals are using it and how we're monitoring that so that, so that everybody's following best practices in terms of how you look at the data, how you take action steps in conjunction with that data, and?
We can do that as part of our quarterly report, updates.
Yeah, that'd be, that, that's just fine, and yes, that's something we're working towards. Dr. Goodman in his office, he is also working with Dr. Pamperin, meeting with principals to kind of get a sense of how they feel using the, the data that's at their fingertips. So, we're first kind of assessing where they're at, and then from there, we're developing processes to help them to easier understand how to interpret that data.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh-huh. Yes, please. I have one more.
Yes.
Okay, we have Kathy Galland, and she would come forward as a facilitator for secondary. Dr. Harrell, please.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, members of the board. Well, it's my pleasure to have the opportunity to work with Dr. Kathy Galland. She has been an impressive and important addition to the secondary operations team. Kathy has eight years of experience in the classroom as a communication arts teacher, four years' experience as director of curriculum for a district in the surrounding area, and seven years with the regional professional development consortium, RPDC. So, we're very fortunate to have Kathy and her level of expertise. She has presented at many levels across the state, and excited that she's with us. She's entering her 20th year in education. She is married with twin sons, three stepchildren, and 13 grandchildren, so an exciting, exciting thing around her house, and an avid sailor and hiker. Much like what Dr. Hackenworth is saying with Ms. Holmes, Kathy works with our principals in their professional development, also with developing processes and approaches to creating expertise among their teachers. We are trying to na, to narrow down that data piece, Mr. Hosmer, as you were talking about, so that we're looking at critical pieces at secondary level, because we do have a wealth, and not only the impact of what across the district we're looking at, but also then what is important for that particular building. And Kathy is working with those principals for common direction as well as the uniqueness within their buildings. So, we welcome her and are excited to have her.
Any questions? Anyone? Comments? Thank you. We're excited that you're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Harrell. And that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to information items that were presented at the last meeting. Mrs. Kissinger?
Please.
Good evening, Mrs. Switty, Board of Education, and Dr. Ritter. It's my pleasure tonight to bring to you an update on our SPS learning model. And as an introduction, just a brief reminder that on August 24th, 2010, at your meeting, we provided an overview of the process and some next steps. And then, following in December, our advisory team that has been working with us for many months brought forward recommendations, and we talked about next steps. So, this is an opportunity to give you an update on what's happened since that time. A couple of reminders, the purposes of the model, really two main ones. One is to communicate what the capabilities are that our students need to be successful in the 21st century, and then processes, how we're going to guide the instruction and the work in the district. And I think one of the important points to make is that we see this learning model as something that is for both students and adults in the system. And we're starting with the process with students, but we will be moving that through our whole system to work with our adults as well. You may recall that initially, this work came forward from a strategic meeting that the board had in November of 2009, and you identified this as a priority, was to look at what are the capabilities that our students most need to be successful. And I want to give you a little bit of an overview of what you're going to see tonight. Couple of times, I'm going to share with you a short video clip, and the video clip was actually made as part of a training that we are currently in process of providing for all of our teachers and our leaders across the system, to make sure that we have a common awareness of and among our teachers and our leaders about the learning model, how it came about, and what the main pieces of that are. So, Mr. Hosmer is going to start tonight by sharing with you a little bit about the history of and how we got started with the 21st century capabilities. He actually participated in our production of our DVD for our teachers, so you can get to see what he had to say.
I think my involvement probably started with the InVision SPS group that, that met, tried to look at, you know, where we were going as a district and where we needed to go with the district. And that kind of led into the board at a retreat discussing some of these same issues and the fact that, that one of the things that the board wanted to focus on was, was 21st century skills, and whether or not we're there as a district, where we needed to go with that, which led into an advisory group and multiple meetings to try to determine, you know, whether it was something the district, whether it was a, a direction the district needed to go in, and how we were going to do it if, if we were going to do it. So, that was kind of my involvement in the process. Because, you know, you, you see the statistics about, you know, the technology advances and the, and the job market, and how quickly that changes, and how many jobs kids are going to have over the course of their lives. That, those core abilities and core skills are going to be incredibly important for them to be successful. So, I think for the community, you know, knowing that their schools are being intentional about that is, you know, going to be, I think, a great relief to them.
And you may recall that the advisory team was composed of approximately 60 stakeholders, and it include parents and students and community members, higher education, our business community, faith-based community, and various district staff members were involved over a period of really about eight months. The advisory team started their work in January of 2010, and their initial work involved both some research, some review of literature. You may recall, many of you attended the session that Ken Kay, who was the president of the Partnership for 21st Century Skills, came to Springfield and facilitated that evening back in May of 2010. And then, the advisory team in the, the summer, their June meeting, decided that they had been able to narrow down the list of capabilities for students to approximately 10, but really felt like we needed some broader community input. So, the recommendation at that time was that in the summer and fall of 2010, that we surveyed a sample group of our stakeholders in the community, as well as all of our teachers, to further narrow down the list of 10 capabilities to a more manageable focus number. And so, that work was completed the summer and fall of 2010. And then, in October and November of 2010, the advisory team analyzed all that survey data and identified, and then we brought to you in December of 2010, some recommendations from the advisory team about what we needed to focus on to meet the needs of our students in the 21st century. And you may recall that the core of that recommendation was relevant and rigorous curriculum as a centerpiece, and they identified three key capabilities that would be our primary focus, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. In other words, we want our students to graduate able to do those three, think, three things at high levels. The advisory team also recommended that as we develop support materials, that as we develop the definitions of these, that we made sure we integrated the ability of students to apply their learning, to discern reliable information, to innovate and create, and to solve problems. And then, they also identified that there are some things catalyst, as you know, are things that kind of speed up or facilitate the action of other things. And so, this advisory team also identified three catalysts. In other words, what three things would most help facilitate students developing these other capabilities? And those three catalysts were digital literacy, global perspectives, and work ethic. Then, the second purpose, after the, we identified the capabilities that we wanted to focus on as a district to meet our student needs, was the work that's been involved, probably really actually more than a year and a half, of researching what are the critical processes or just things that we can do in the classroom or in the workplace that are going to help us develop those capabilities among both our students and our adults in the system. And so, what we did primarily from January 2010 to March 2012 was a deep research and literature review. And one of the key sources for that was John Hattie's work on visible learning, and we looked at a lot of other pieces of research, but one we looked at was, was John Hattie, and really became kind of the centerpiece or the core of the recommendations for actions that we would need to focus on in classroom and in the workplace. And we did include a little piece in our training for our teachers, our digital training for our teachers, to help them understand the rationale for part of the learning model that we'll look at a little bit later. Now, you're going to get to see Dr. Goodman talk a little bit about John Hattie's work.
In the field of education, one of the most enduring messages is that everything seems to work. It's not hard to find studies and to find research done of high quality that promotes and shows the effect and shows the value of a certain approach or a certain idea related to how it positively or negatively influences student learning or influences student achievement. So, along those lines, then, the question isn't really what works in terms of promoting student learning or promoting student achievement, but how does something work in comparison to something else? So, if we know that these two things, according to the literature, according to the research work, we need to be able to choose between those. And when we think about what works, if we were to make a list, we could, we could easily come up with 20, 30, 40 things that we know work related to promoting student learning. So, John Hattie's work of visible learning from 2009, then, seeks to place all of those pieces that work and ask that question, and gives that answer as to how does something work in comparison to something else. Specifically, identified 138 influential variables, concepts, ideas that have been shown through the research to influence student learning. And so, by placing them along a single continuum, the work allows us to understand how does one idea compare relative to another. If we think of just the numbers alone, visible learning represents kind of the summation then of, of over 50,000 studies. And if you think about the students involved in those studies that have been aggregated up in this process, it's well over, it's many millions of students. I would expect Hattie's visible learning to be this next generation's equivalent of Marzano, just based on the breadth and the depth with which he, he tackles this idea of teaching and learning.
So, from that deep research that the steering committee completed, we identified some key processes. Again, these would be actions that we would have as our core focus in classroom and work, knowing that the interaction of these four things make the most difference in terms of student learning and productivity in the workplace. And those four key processes, first and probably foremost, are person-centered relationships, so building positive relationships among and between students and teacher in the classroom, and leader, and staff in the workplace. Secondly, high expectations, and we'll talk a little bit later about some important relationship between person-centered relationships and high expectations. Very important to have clear goals and success criteria. In other words, knowing what it is we're trying to accomplish and how we're going to measure success of that, accomplishing that. And then, finally, the importance of effective feedback. And this probably is something everybody in this room is aware of, but there is a reason why we limited the number, because as Dr. Goodman said, we can really identify many, many things. But I think most of us know there are how many digits in a phone number? A local phone number? Seven, because there is some brain research behind that. That's about as much as we can focus on or remember. And we didn't particularly pick seven, but we knew we had to have a limited number so that we could really focus and get very skilled at the things that matter most, both in the workplace and in the classroom. So, final goal was to design a visual model, knowing that being able to see something represented in a visual format is also a, a brain-based effort and helps us remember that, the pieces and parts of that. I'm really excited to share with you that the person who designed this, after all this preliminary work was done by the advisory team and the steering team on the processes, is actually a graduate of Springfield Public Schools. So, it's another little piece, I think, that adds something special to this. You may recall at previous board updates, we shared with you some examples from other school districts. This was an example from Chesterfield County in Virginia. And we shared these other two examples, Catalina-Foot Hills School District in Arizona, and the Tacoma-Washington School District has a visual model. We, as a team, identified some parameters that we felt were important for our visual model, and I want to share these very briefly with you, because I think it may help make sense why we have the visual model and why it looks as it does. We knew it was very important that it be on one page and not be something that people are going to have to flip through multiple pages to see the pieces and parts of it. Had to be actionable, something on a piece of paper that doesn't call people to action is not going to be very effective. We also knew we needed a balance between text and graphics, and as you looked at some of those previous models, some of them were very, very heavy in text, so we wanted to have some more graphical representation. Wanted something that, because of the quality that we know Springfield Public Schools provides to our students and community, that it looked professional and polished. Probably one of the most critical parameters is that we wanted it to serve as a guide and not a prescription, so it becomes a framework for how we go about approaching our work and our instruction in the classroom. And then, finally, we want it to be focused, defendable, and doable. And with our, our pieces in the learning model, you may remember we had some integrated pieces, and we have some catalysts. And you're not going to see those, because remember, those were underlying and supporting. So, the pieces that we do have in our learning model visual include the core, the key capabilities, and the key processes. So, we're going to build this for you very quickly. Again, the core is relevant and rigorous curriculum, because about which that are how we go about thinking and communicating and collaborating. I think one of the most clear ways of saying that came from Ken Kay. He said, "You can't communicate, critically think, and collaborate about nothing." So, our focus on critical thinking, collaboration, and communication is going to be around and about relevant and rigorous curriculum. So, our capabilities, again, you can see our collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. And then, we have those processes which revolve around our core and our capabilities, and those are that person-centered relationship piece, high expectations, clear goals and success criteria, and then effective feedback. And finally, it's really important that we have relationships among those processes. So, I want to very quickly give you an example or two of why that's important. We know from the research that, as I mentioned earlier, that person-centered relationships, positive relationships are important for student learning. But positive relationships, without an incorporation of high expectations, we will not get the results we can get if we have both. And if I'm a teacher in a classroom and I have high expectations, but I don't incorporate person-centered relationships, I'm also not going to get the same learning result for my students, or if I'm a leader in the workplace, the same productivity from my, from my staff. Then, a second relationship is between clear goals and success criteria and the high expectations. The high expectations are going to obviously drive what our goals are and our success criteria, because I can have clear goals and I can articulate what the success criteria might be. In other words, how I'm going to demonstrate that I've met that goal, but if the goal doesn't rely on a high expectation, I'm still not going to produce either productivity in the workplace or learning in the classroom. So, they're very closely related. Relationship between, an example between effective feedback and clear goals and success criteria. When we talk about effective feedback, we're not talking about necessarily the gold star or the happy face or the good job, but very specific feedback that's specific to something that we identified as a learning goal or what we expected the success criteria to be. So, the two are very closely interrelated, and the feedback, then, that we get also re-informs the next set of goals and the success criteria. And then, finally, an example of relationships between effective feedback and person-centered relationships. If I have a positive relationship with students in my classroom, the ability to give them that important, critical feedback about how they're progressing on those learning goals is enhanced. And likewise, if I know how to give effective feedback, I can enhance the relationship that I have with students in the classroom. So, the two really do have a very strong relationship. There's also something I want to share with you about the, the graphic itself. You may notice that we have quite a few words on here right now. Our hope is, as we progress as a district, and this becomes a familiarity to all of us, that we'll gradually start losing the words. And you'll see there's a unique icon for each of our capabilities, and there's a unique color as well, and there's unique colors and icons for each of our processes, that at some point, we'll be able to take the words off, and people will just see the graphical representation and know exactly what each of those pieces means. So, it's going to kind of be a gradual release as we learn and implement the learning model, what those text, text parts are on the learning model. Want to talk to you very briefly, and this was in your information item, about our deployment plans. For this year, we have really four goals, and our major goal is to create awareness across our system among our teachers and our leaders, and then later, our staff. And we had a team within our steering team that was really led by Dr. Robin Hagerman, our Director of Information Literacy, because we had the question, how do you in a district this size with 1,600 teachers and another 200-plus leaders communicate something like this in a common way across the whole system? And we also wanted to be very attuned to the needs of our sites and not dump something on them to have to do. So, we thought, well, we will create a DVD training that we will be able to just hand to the principals with everything prepared for them, that they will be able to provide for their teachers and have that common message across the system. And Dr. Hagerman, along with the rest of our steering team, did an outstanding job, and those video clips that you're seeing are part of that DVD training. The second thing that's actually already started happening is teacher teams working on configurations. And what that really means is, it's a word picture of what that capability looks like in the classroom. So, last spring, we had about 40 teachers come together for multiple meetings, and they basically worked on a rubric that defines what critical thinking will look like in the classroom. And so, they will continue working with some additional teachers who, who have volunteered to help with that, developing the rubrics or the critical, or the configurations for collaboration and communication. And we thought you might like to hear from a couple of the teachers that worked on that about that work and the importance of the model.
The critical thinking instructional configuration is going to help us to be more intentional in teaching critical thinking to our students. The instructional configuration is going to help us as teachers in guiding our students, teaching them those critical thinking skills that they're going to need to be successful in the real world. We want our students to be better thinkers, and we're constantly asking them to do that. And I think this process is one of those ways that we can train them and show them what we mean when we say, be a better thinker, think clearly, do this, follow these steps. I think one of the best things about it, and one of the things that pretty much everybody in the room was saying, in a way that'll help us in the classroom and help teachers, is that it fits everybody. It's not something that just communication arts teachers in seventh grade are going to do. It's something that whether you teach art, or PE, or social studies, whether you're a kindergarten teacher, or a fifth-grade teacher, or a ninth-grade teacher, you can use it. And even librarians can use it, principals can use it when they're talking to students about how they're thinking through making decisions, how they're doing research. It's just great that it works for everybody, because that's sometimes rare in education. And this isn't going to be one more thing, okay, one more thing we're expected to do. This is going to be something that teachers can look at and say, okay, I'm already exhibiting these teacher behaviors. My classroom environment is already set up in this way. And so, kind of affirm, okay, these are some things that I'm already doing. And then, also see, okay, this is an area that maybe I could tweak just a little bit and tweak what I'm doing, or do the same thing, but a little bit more intentionally to, to make it just a little bit better.
And those were just two of our teachers that worked on that team to work on the critical thinking configuration. Some of those teachers that worked last spring on the critical thinking rubric or configuration have volunteered to test that in the classroom so that we can refine it and make it a better product before we roll it out across the system. So, I think last count, we had about eight or 10 of those teachers that volunteered to do that, and they're going to be doing that during the school year this year. And then, the fourth goal for deployment this year is really to facilitate professional learning for our library media specialists, our librarians, so that they can build their capabilities to support the learning model in their schools. Finally, and you may recall, we actually talked a little bit about this at the last board meeting, when we talked about the American Productivity and Quality Center training that's going to occur with the Process Performance Management in November, that one of our projects would be around SP5, and one of the subparts of that was developing a long-range deployment plan for the SPS learning model. So, that's really a big next step is for that project team to look at, what do we do in 1213, and what's the way to accomplish that? And you may recall, Springfield Public Schools was also invited to be part of a national group, really one of probably the first 15 school districts in the nation to be invited because of our work with 21st Century Skills. And it's interesting that that, Ed Leader 21 is the name of that group, and they're actually now also partnering with APQC, the American Productivity and Quality Center, to facilitate deployment in school districts. So, they see us really, both organizations, as a lead in this. And they have identified really seven steps that, that successful districts take in deploying 21st century capabilities. We've completed the first two, and that's really developing that community consensus. We've started the work, as you can see, from our update tonight, on aligning the system and building some professional capacity, primarily awareness level this year. And that long-range deployment plan will also look at embedding it in the curriculum and assessment, which is critical, as, as Mr. Hosmer has mentioned prior, and we talked about in the advisory team, how are we going to know our students are developing these skills? And then, most importantly, how do we systematically support our teachers in the classroom? So, that'll be part of that long-range deployment plan. And I'm going to conclude, actually, Mr. Hosmer is going to conclude with a few thoughts about the learning model, and I do want to publicly thank him. He spent many, many hours, our entire steering team and advisory team did, in the work, and I think he was, I'm not sure you even missed a meeting, did you, Mr. Hosmer?
I don't think so.
He was there every time, and we had a lot of meetings, and very good input, and I think it's very powerful. He came in and helped us put the DVD together for our teachers, and there's nothing more important than them getting to hear from board members about the importance of what we're all trying to do together to support kids. So, I'm going to finish with that, and then I'll see if you have any questions, and we'll try to answer those if you do.
Well, I think the SPS learning model is, is important, because I, I think what it allows us to do is, allows us to be intentional. us to do is allows us to be intentional. You know, and as I said early on, and when we talked about, you know, critical thinking, we talked about collaboration or communication. It's apparent that in many of our classrooms around the district, that's already happening. We're already getting all sorts of critical thinking going on. We're already getting a lot of communication, a lot of collaboration. But it's kind of hit and miss here and there. And I think the idea behind the learning model is becoming a lot more intentional about doing that, but also about figuring out how you can assess that so we can see it being done. And so that, you know, again, we know that the kids that we're graduating from our schools have these skills, which we, as a community, have come together and said, "These are critical
And with that, I would be glad to try to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Hosmer, would you like to ask questions of yourself?
No, I don't know why Mr. Goodman looked so much better than I did on that video. But it seemed like I had a crick in my neck. Couple of comments, first of all. I certainly enjoyed my time doing this. The visual model, I must admit, the first couple of days I looked at it, I got it early on, and I didn't completely understand it. It kind of confused me. But the more I look at it, the more I understand it, I think it's really good. And I think it really explains what we're going to try to do. So I'm very, become very appreciative of it. And I think, like I said, I think it really is very good. The other thing that strikes me, and I just thought about this when we were doing the effective feedback, person-centered relationships, high expectations, these four processes, these align perfectly with, you know, we talked, the Gates Foundation did research with students where they polled students. And students came together and they said, you know, "What are your best teachers like?" And kids picked all these four things. So just kids, you ask kids, you know, "What's your best, you know, what makes Mr. Jones good?" Or "What makes Mrs. Jones good?" And by themselves, they came up with these, basically, these four things. You know, the high expectations, the clear goals, the effective feedback. So I do think that, you know, as I said before, I do think it's happening. Our best teachers are already using these processes across the district. So it's not a situation where you dump something else on teachers and say, "By the way, what you were doing yesterday, you're not going to do anymore. We want you now to switch to the learning model." But I think, you know, it is being intentional about that because we're already seeing it in the district. And being intentional is going to be important. The other thing I think that's important to note of these, the capabilities, you know, when the team met, it became real apparent that these were the three things the community wanted. I mean, it wasn't like there were bunches of things to choose from and we, you know, did a coin flip and decided these. It was really clear that, you know, that the community and the staff and the team all kind of quickly coalesced around these capabilities. So I think that's, you know, kind of just a common sense approach to what those capabilities I guess more, I'm really excited about the whole, this whole process and for a couple of reasons. One is just the idea of the 21st century skills and capabilities. But not one mention during your presentation or anything I've read with what you've talked about, have we ever talked about college readiness or career readiness? Which I think is fabulous. Because we have been getting so wrapped up in this tunnel vision of that's our, the end justifies the means. Whereas now we focus on the student. How can the student be successful? And what does it take for the student to be successful? And I don't care what he does. I don't care if he goes to college. I don't care if he goes to his career, whatever. He's ready to be a productive citizen with the 21st century skills. And it's concerned me a long time that we've got wrapped up in this, this is the end. It's college readiness and career readiness. And we've totally lost sight of this, what the student needs to be successful in the community. And I'm really excited about, I mean, that's not our mission. This is our mission. This is what we're here for, is to ensure that the student's learning the skills that he's going to need to be successful in whatever he chooses. It's not my place to decide what he chooses. That's, I want him to be or her to be prepared for whatever that is. And these are the skills and the capabilities that they need. And I just, I really appreciate the fact that we're focused on that and not getting bogged down in the minutia of, you know, "How many of them are going to school? How many remedial classes do we have? How many of this?" Because I think this will take care of itself when you do, I mean, this will all happen with curriculum, with the capabilities. And I guess that's what excites me the most about it is this, I don't like to say it solves a problem, but it covers the whole thing and we don't get wrapped up in this college-ready and career-ready that we are so deep in quicksand on that we lose sight of, you know, the proverbial, you know, up to our neck in alligators and we forgot why we were there in the first place. And so I'm just really excited about that and looking forward to seeing that as it continues to deploy and keep it out. Because I think it's going to be a model for a lot of people, particularly in this state.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You mentioned that we had been asked as one of the 15 districts in the country to participate. Can you just give me an idea of how many districts might be at this level of this kind of approach to develop this kind of unified learning model?
I am aware of less than 20 right now.
In the whole country?
In the whole country, that are at the point that we are at in terms of building community consensus, identifying those things, and at least initially starting deployment of this. And I, you know, with that, we'd like to say to the team that worked on this, thank you to the board for two very specific things. One is your vision, because you had the vision in November of 2009. And our envisioned SPS group facilitated that as well to put us on this path. And it is now September of 2011. So that's the second thing I want to thank you for, is your patience in this process. Because we needed time with the process to build community consensus. And I can tell you, in some school districts that tried, have tried recently to start this kind of work and do it in a few months, they've had all kinds of issues in the community internally because they didn't take time to seek the feedback that they needed to seek. And they didn't take time to thoughtfully put together a model that could work for the system. And so those two things are very, very important. And the steering team, and I know the advisory team as well, recognize that. And thank you as a board for that, having an early vision and then being patient with the process.
I think this is a fantastic presentation. And I'm interested to know or to find out, will this be given? I mean, we hear it at the board table, and perhaps the media will report on it. But is it going to be given at any other public groups? And in particular, because it applies to the business community, wouldn't they like to hear about it? And I don't know if we have the time to do so, but I would like to see us pursue that because it's smart. It's very, very smart.
I think we're certainly willing to share it. And I will tell you that one of the things we're going to provide to you, and we would provide it to anyone, is a link, because we can do it electronically, to the DVD training that goes through the process, really builds the how did we get where we are? Because we know internally as well as externally, we don't want our teachers to think this is just something that dropped down from the sky on top of them. So we walk them through the advisory team and why that's important. And it was why it was important to have a board member speak in that particular training video. And we're going to provide a link to you. So if you're interested in seeing other pieces and parts of it and how it was introduced to our staff, you'd be willing to do that. We've also talked about, and this actually came from our principals, we had a principals group that advised us on the training for the teachers. And they suggested, they want to roll this out and inform their communities. So they have suggested that we put together a similar DVD overview, take less of the instructional pieces out, and target it specifically for a community audience, that they can share with their PTAs and their site councils and some other community groups. So we could very well, when we produce that, our target is to try to do that by second semester sometime, that we could also provide that to our business community as well. And that may be a more efficient way rather than us trying to take a show on the road to be able to at least make people aware of it. So thank you for that insight.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, this idea came from one of the community leadership visits to Grand Rapids. And I think there was a community college there in Grand Rapids that had spent a lot of time thinking about 21st century skills for their students. And so I think, I think it's just, it's good to tie those visits that some of us are able to take as community leadership with other leaders in the community to other places in the country and realize the value of what we, the knowledge and the experiences that we have in those cities and bring them back here. I mean, that was really the spring board for presenting and asking that we start to look at that. So I think that's, having had that visit just happen, and I think it's money well spent.
Dr. Riehl?
Go ahead Denise.
I just have a quick question. And I'm thinking about this and how this is going to look for our teachers in the classroom. And I know we currently have many teachers that are implementing CCI. So can you speak to just a minute, how this is going to, you know, how this will look and how it integrates with what they're currently doing? And I know it's very important for teachers, I think a critical piece of this is that teachers have been involved from the very beginning in planning. So can you speak to how that might look for those individuals that are currently implementing CCI and those that will bring this on in place of, or how that looks?
Absolutely. I'll answer your question and then expand a little bit on it. So one of the things you might be interested in knowing that the steering team has done is we have made, and it's many, many pages long, a list of all of the district initiatives. And we've done a gap analysis. How do each of those initiatives, whether it's Six Plus One Treat Writing, it's CCI, it's, you know, Read 180, any of the things that we have going on, how does it align with the learning model? What are some maybe misalignments with the learning model? And then what might, how might we use that if it's aligned? How can we use that alignment as a driver to drive the learning model? And if it creates a barrier, what can we do to minimize those barriers for teachers and leaders across the system? So we have done, we've almost got it finished, a gap analysis of all the initiatives. And one of the things, and back to your specific question, Dr. Frederick, about CCI, we kept commenting when we were looking at the research, if a staff, a class, or a leader is using continuous improvement, they're doing the learning model. And two very specific pieces, clear goals and success criteria. A piece of CCI is setting for with students, what are the goals of the learning and how are we going to know when you get there? And then implementing strategies to try to learn. And then coming back and very intentionally looking at, did we reach our goal? If we did, what activities in the classroom helped us learn most? And if we didn't, what might we do differently next time to better achieve our learning goal? That's really the cycle of continuous improvement in the classroom. And that's really what the learning model is about. So I would say to a teacher that's effectively implementing CCI, they have nothing to worry about because they're already doing much of this. And those that aren't, they don't necessarily have to do CCI. But this is, remember, is a guide, not a prescription. So what we've asked teachers to do, and you'll see this if you choose to look at the training, is to stop and say, "What am I doing in my classroom? How does it align with or fit with the learning model?" And then say, "Are there some things that I'm not doing that I might consider doing differently to better align with the learning model?" It's not intended to replace, or supplement, or add to anything that teachers are doing. It's just a guide and not a prescription.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up. I was going to report on the Economic Development Conference last Thursday during my report, but I thought I'd wait until after this because it aligns really well. And Ted Abernathy, who is a consultant and economist, works with John Hopkins. Well, he graduated from John Hopkins, but also works with them. And works with 10 southern states as far as looking at scenarios and prescribing best case systems and situations for kids and for, really for the whole US economy. And what's interesting is, is he said that Springfield is really a strong incubator. We have around 100,000 kids when you look at the K-12, I mean, K-16 component. And he says, "The real piece that you really need to be targeting is helping these kids understand that it's not just career-ready and it's not college-ready," as Mr. Lee was talking about. "It's actually being able to think critically, solve problems, et cetera." And so he really complimented Springfield. He complimented our education system. He complimented our ability to be flexible and to really provide what he would call a strong economy. And so the future is very bright, he thought, in Springfield. We had several panel discussions. I really do want to bring out one presentation by the Director of Expedia, who just came into, of course, Springfield. And they went through one growth mode already. And they have, we here, Expedia here is the second-largest organization that they have, system that they have on the planet. And they have 25 different systems throughout the world. We're second to Seattle. He said he would, everybody is excited about Springfield and the product that Springfield produces mainly because our product produces. We're the one, we are probably the most productive person, employee that they have around the world. And he said, "What really makes us really very good and very, very strong as far as being productive is we have a strong work ethic. And we also are very good at following instructions." And so he feels it's really good. But he says that he's beginning to see, they want to expand Springfield plant to be even larger, or system be even larger than, and the largest one in the world. He said, "What's the problem is, is that they don't, we don't have really enough in our pool to be able to respond to their needs." And what he was talking about there is we have plenty of kids graduating from college. We have plenty of kids that are not qualified. It's the middle of the road. It's the kids that basically can solve problems, think critically. He said he loves to get our kids right out of high school. They're very, very good. And so he was very complimentary. He said, "By the way, it's not enough just to be a know-it-all as far as knowledge-based. You've got to be able to be flexible and be very creative." He says, "A good example is their latest commercial." And maybe many of you recognize the commercial when I describe it. It's where a guy jumps out of the plane. And he's on his way down along with a friend, and they're without a parachute for a while. And he takes out his iPhone and he makes a reservation at a hotel. And then they land through Expedia. And then they land at the base of the hotel and they walk in, they have the rope. But anyway, and he said, "It takes creativity to create that commercial." But he says, "That can actually happen." So anyway, he feels that we, our future, as well as what Abernathy said, that Springfield's future is extremely bright. And our task is to keep the bright kids here. And he says that it's really going to be a challenge to do that. And so we have the education systems in place, he said, "Now it's going to be important for the community to keep the kids here or to bring them back." Okay? And so I thought that I'd share that with you. And he mentioned, by the way, these capabilities as something that is very important for Expedia, but also Abernathy talked about it being very important. And this is where we outshine. He says, "We are the most productive population in the world since 2008. Up to 2008, we were way down the ladder. But since 2008, we've become very productive." So I thought that I'd share that with you. And it's something that, it says that we really are aligned with where we're going, so.
And if I may, we have a few wearisomes in the audience that have spent, and this is probably minimal, hundreds of hours beyond their regular work responsibilities over the last 20 months to design, get feedback, look at research, to make sure that we provided a learning model that meets the needs of our community. And just a few are here, but those few that are here, I'd like for you to stand and be recognized. So either steering team or advisory team.
One more question this time. One of the things that obviously you know is, that's critically important here is how we measure this, you know? How do you measure that communication is going on in the classroom? How do you measure the collaboration is going on in the classroom? How do you measure that critical thinking is going on in the classroom? Are there models out there that you've identified where other school districts or other institutions have been able to see that, assess that in an objective way so that everybody knows that it's happening?
I think that the difficulty is the term "objective." Because what we've seen so far in our research of looking at how other school districts are measuring some of these capabilities, there is a very, very wide continuum. And it depends on what that particular district and community is willing to accept as evidence that students are completing or meeting those capability expectations. It ranges all the way from an exit project where a student actually has to demonstrate that they can communicate, that how they went about, what they did to collaborate to be able to identify, and that they have to have critical thinking. And there's those rubrics we talked about, that's going to, would inform something like an exit project. All the way to teachers measuring in the classroom, a certain portion of their grade has to be about the key capabilities. So that's going to be part of the long-range deployment planning, is how do we embed it in the curriculum? And how do we assess it in a way that's not overburdening for either teachers or students, but that we can really know as students either transition from one key grade area to the next, or at the end of their high school experience, that they can demonstrate that they're leaving us with those capabilities? So that's going to be probably the biggest challenge of the long-range deployment plan is. So, that's going to be probably the biggest challenge of the long-range deployment plan is.
And will that come back to the board when those have been developed? And so, the board can see how we're going to measure these?
We have made a commitment to update the board. We've been trying to do that about every six months. And I think we'll probably, your next update will be where we're at with the deployment planning. And the deployment plan itself may say how we're going to go about identifying the assessment. I'm not sure at what point we will have the assessments developed. It's going to be, as I said in the information item, a multifaceted, multi-year process. Because if we're going to do it as we've done with this, we need to take the time to do it thoughtfully and very well.
Because the quickest way for this just to completely fall apart is to, at the end of the year, to have the teachers say, check, communicates, collaborates, critically thinks. Perfect. We're 100%, you know? And, because, I mean, I'm sure districts, you know, it's kind of, we'll just check it off and we see it or four kids are sitting together, so obviously they're collaborating because they're talking to each other.
And that is that one end of that continuum that I was talking about, that I don't see being where we will head as a school district.
Thank you, Mrs. Skisind.
You're welcome.
And I noticed on the agenda that I skipped over comments from the public. Do we have any? Oh, okay. Awesome.
We would have reminded you.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chodas.
Thank you. If you'd open up the second PDF file. I know this is September and the 2010-11 year seems a long time ago. But we have just finished all our journal entries, accruals, reconciliations, et cetera. Handed everything off to our external auditors. And they have the information and they will be presenting the audit in November. I believe that's when we will be presenting. So, I thought it was appropriate to take a look at where we are at this time for the 2010-11, prior to any audit adjustments. And there have not been any audit adjustments the last several years. Looking at this, at this spreadsheet, you'll see that Fund 10 is our general fund. Fund 50 is our food service fund. 60 is our student activity funds. And those three funds are totaled in that first box there that says total general slash incidental fund. And the reason why that's in a box is because that's the way that information is reported to DESI. DESI does not recognize that we have a general fund, a food service fund, a student activity fund. They just see the total of those three funds and that's what's reported to them. Then there's the teachers' fund, which is reported to them. Then there is our capital fund and our bond fund. And those two are combined and reported to DESI as a capital projects fund. And then we have the debt service fund. And the total of all those funds is what is reported to DESI. Now, to complicate things a bit, the column that says operating, or excuse me, DESI fund balance percentage, the very last box to the right there. The way DESI calculates the reserve percentage is they take the fund balance from the two boxes on the left, the general and the teachers' fund, that 22.4 million. And they divide that by the expenditures for just those two funds. And that's how they come up with their fund balance percentage. And you'll see at the start of the year, it was 7.23 percent. And we ended the year with a little over 11 percent. Now, if you look at the yellow columns, those are our operating funds. And you'll recognize those. Fund 10 is our general fund, Fund 20 our teachers', and Fund 40 our capital. And those, once again, are the funds that we feel we have control over. So, that is, that's been our focus for a number of years, is those operating funds. And if you look to the right, you'll see the total operating funds. We started the year with about $20.6 million. And I'm very pleased that we have ended the year at $28.8 million. And what that has done is it has raised our operating fund balance reserve from 10.4% up to 14.79%. And that's exciting because that $28 million and that 14.79% allows us to address our strategic plan with regards to teacher pay. It would be great if we didn't have to go another couple of years without giving staff pay. And this will definitely help in that regards. As well as class size. And I think we're going to be presenting an action item here a little later along that line. So, any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Looks like all pretty good news.
Good news.
Yeah?
Very good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7.01, which was action taken at the September 6th meeting, approving policy BBFA. That was approved. Any comments or questions on that? If not, we'll move to action items for separate consideration. And, Kenna, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Ritter, members of the board. This action item is to bring to you the results of the district's marketing of medical stop-loss coverage. As a reminder to the board, the purpose of medical stop-loss coverage is to limit the district's liability of medical claims for both specific plan participants and for the district's health plan as a whole in terms of dollar amount, maximum limitation. This coverage is marketed annually by the district's health insurance benefits broker, Gallagher Benefit Services. Proposals are received and analyzed. And tonight, we have a recommendation for you to continue our contract with the district's current provider, which is HM Insurers Incorporated. The financial impact of this proposal, proposed contract renewal would be an increase in premium from the current premium level, which would equal a little over 100 and, about 30% from 461,959,000 to 614,060. Primarily, the result of that increase is, or that increase is the result of claims experience, some specific large claims that the district experienced in this past year, and also projected increase in healthcare costs in the coming year and federal healthcare legislation and the changes that the district has experienced as a result of that legislation. So, again, our recommendation tonight, and we do need action on this due to the nature of the contract, is that the district, that the board approves superintendent or designate to sign a contract with HM Insurers Incorporated. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The premium says it has a laser for one participant. Can you explain to me in a little more detail what that, what that is?
Sure. The way that the coverage is structured, it identifies a specific deductible over which the insurance company would reimburse the district if a specific plan participant surpasses that deductible. When the district markets the coverage to the market, we also present to each carrier that's going to quote the coverage, specific information about high-dollar claimants, claimants who experience high dollars of claim costs for whatever reason, because of a diagnosis or because of something else in their medical history. The carriers have the ability to look at that history and make a determination as to whether or not there's one or two or any number of specific claimants that, because of their medical history, the carrier wants to have a higher deductible on that specific individual or individuals. And in this example, the carrier did identify one claimant that they wanted to increase the deductible from 250,000, which is what it is for all participants, to, in this case, 350,000 because of the nature of their claims.
Okay. And would that then possibly open us up to another $100,000 worth of?
It would.
Coverage coming out of our pockets in the health plan, is that right?
It would, for that particular claimant.
Okay. All right. And that's just typical?
Yes.
In the industry?
It is. And in fact, our current policy with this same carrier has one laser. It's on a different claimant. But they looked at our claims history and did the same thing, but chose a different claimant.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion's been made by Ms. Callen, seconded by Mr. Lee. The motion that the board adopt the recommendation of administration and approve the superintendent or designate to sign a contract authorizing HM insurers. Vote. And hope that it works. I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the...
Request for additional?
I've lost, yes, I've lost. Yes, for additional teachers, that's sort of important.
And the reason this is on the agenda is that we're going to be making a request to fund these positions out of the reserves. So, on that note, Dr. Harrell, please explain.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Good evening again. It's an exciting request, but it is a request for additional staffing, including three paraprofessional FTE in our elementary division to help with increased enrollment and increased numbers in combination classes as well as oversized classes. Over the last few years, as we've seen decreases in revenue, we've had to make other adjustments and cuts, reductions and reallocations, we have seen a reduction of 23% in our paraprofessional staffing. In addition, our English Language Learners Program, which is a program that we have certainly worked hard to support, but has needed some attention, is seeing an increase also in the number of students, as well as number of students taking advantage of those opportunities. And so, we're excited to see that. But that has caused a large ratio increase when we look at the number of ESL teachers in comparison with the number of ESL students, based on state recommendations and where we currently are. Particularly at Harrison Elementary, we have an increase there where we're seeing 68 students in our ELL program. And we have one full-time ELL FTE. And so, the teacher request that you're seeing for the ELL teacher would be a teacher at Harrison Elementary to help with that, with reducing those numbers and to assist in that program at that particular location. Also, at Hickory Hills Elementary, we have a ratio of 1 to 42, in a sense, of ELL teachers with ELL students, ESL students. And we're requesting an additional FTE, para-FTE at Hickory Hills to assist in that program. We have a student in need of a paraprofessional through the 504 program. And that student is at Fremont Elementary. So, we are requesting from the board, three para-FTE for reduction in oversized classrooms and in combination classrooms at the elementary level. One para-FTE for the ELL program at Hickory Hills. One para-FTE for a Section 504 student. And then one teacher FTE in the ELL program at Harrison Elementary. As Dr. Ritter mentioned, the request for funds would come out of the fund balance in this request. So, again, I think it's exciting because it does show growth. It shows an opportunity to emphasize the program that's very important to us and that we're seeing changes in. And we are requesting that the board vote on this this evening and approve the five paras and one teacher FTE for 2011, 2012 school year.
Any questions? Ms. Callen?
Several of these requests are related to programs that I think are mandated to us by the federal government, right? And that's 504 and the English Second Language. What possibility is there that there would be federal funds that would reimburse us for these local funds that we're expending?
We do receive Title III funding in the ELL program. That funding is very specific in how it can be used. Typically, it is designed around teacher professional development and support of the certification to have ESL certification. It has very specific guidelines against what you can use in a sense of staffing. And that is one area that we cannot use, that particular funds is to reimburse for a teacher staff.
So, we're mandated to provide the service, but this would probably be considered a unfunded mandate from the federal government?
That would be accurate.
Didn't we have an amount of money in our budget that we didn't specify for personnel that we actually approved in the budget? Or am I thinking wrong about that? Has that been, that's been used?
That was primarily set aside for administration at the sites or in the central office, not for teachers. That was the intention.
No, that has not been used.
No.
It hadn't been?
No.
The three paras for the oversized classroom, where are they going? Do we have sites for them?
I'm going to refer to Dr. Hackenworth on that.
We actually have, there's some shuffling that will occur with these three positions. We currently have some, a para that's unable to perform a particular duty in a school, it'll be, that'll be moved. So, Hickory Hills will receive some support from these FTE. Pershing will receive some support. I believe it may be Bowerman that is the third school receiving support. Thank you.
Any other questions? A quick question. In paragraph three, you mentioned that we have another 188 students who have declined services. Does that mean that they just chose not to go to an ESL site? And they want to go to their homeschool site? In other words?
That is exactly right.
But they still won't receive accommodations by an ESL teacher in that building? Or how will that look?
We support the regular education teacher with some tools and professional development support. They're not certificated in a sense of being ESL certified. We also try to support those families. We also continue to monitor those students and we test those students for their level of proficiency twice throughout the school year. So, they do receive support, they receive some assessment, but they don't receive a specific ESL teacher.
So, they were offered the opportunity to go to an ESL site, chose not to?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Could I just have a clarification? So, it's a, it's a program that's mandated by the federal government.
That's right.
But it's optional to students and families. And yet, I imagine that, have those students been tested and said that they would qualify for those services?
These are students that would qualify either from their performance or from their background, meaning the common language spoken in the home. You know, they may very well speak the English language at a high level, but the level of understanding varies.
Okay. So, then they decline those services, even though they've been identified as needing that extra support. And then each spring, they have to take a test in English. And they're qualified as a subgroup.
I know where you're going.
And, and if they don't receive the services that the district offered to them in the first place and don't do well on those tests because of their deficiencies in the language, then the district is held accountable for those results. Is that right?
That would be accurate.
Something's wrong with that picture.
You nailed it.
Who do we see about that? Okay, on that note, any other questions?
I'm always the life of the party here. It's ridiculous.
Okay. No other questions, then I would entertain a motion.
I approve, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Ms. Callen, even though she doesn't like.
Oh, I like, I like what we offer the students. I don't like how it's funded.
If you all would vote, please.
Okay.
Oh. Comes the police.
We brought the police.
Technology police.
Movie stars never were good with technology.
There, we got it.
I've already, I've already voted.
You got it. Thank you. Okay, Treacher's report.
Thank you. If you'll open up the attached file, you will see the... If you'll open up the attached file, you will see the financial statement for August. Numbers are coming in good so far this year, very pleased. The property tax collections up so far this year, sales tax collections up so far this year. If you look at the total revenue line, we're at 8.67% of budget through August compared to 8.64% last year, so we're in the positive direction. On the expenditures, we're actually running ahead of last year, but the bulk of that is in purchase services and supplies, and those will be limited by budget amounts. The larger number will be salaries and benefits, and if you look at the total employee costs, you'll see we're at a little over 3% of the budget compared to 3.49% last year. So, good numbers all around, and no complaints so far this year. Any questions?
No questions? Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Question made by Ms. Callen, second by Mr. Lee. Vote. Got it? Moving on to the routine action items. If there are no changes to the action items, I would ask for a motion that the board approves each of the routine action items as submitted. Mr. Ritter, action?
Second.
Dr. Frederick, thank you. On, oh, has it happened yet? And on, oh, still not. To general consent items, once again, would ask for a motion unless there's something to be amended. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Callen.
Second.
Mr. Ritter? All those in favor voting, please. And we'll move on to information items. That, again, were presented to us. Is there any further comment on either one of these items? O1 or O2? None? I'm sorry, no, yeah, no action taken here. And no public comments? So, moving right ahead to legislative report. Do we have anything, have we heard anything recently?
We sent a bill one, which is sponsored by Cunningham. You have a copy of it in front of you. Came out of the special session, and it's a pretty sterile, that's the best way, I guess, to describe it, bill that is put into the hands of every district as far as putting together their own policy to respond to the technology or the communication as far as social network communication between teacher and student. And as we realize that we will need to, we have some policy in place, but we feel that we're going to need to, of course, wait for MSBA as well as MASA, put together some language, and then we will need to adjust our policy to match that policy. But that just came out currently and was approved, I believe, last week. Am I right? Correct. Attached to this is really some language that's included in our employee handbook related to social network communications. So, and how we, what we have in our handbook to deal with this at the current time. So, anyway, it really hasn't been official yet because I don't think the governor's had a chance to sign it yet.
It's still going through the House.
Still going through the House, so.
It hasn't gone to committee yet.
Right.
They're still working on it, but it happened.
So, bottom line, how does this, really, what does this mean to us?
We have to develop a policy by March 2012. And it's, the one thing I'd say about this is all the education groups in the state really worked together on this one to get a bad bill changed. And see what gets done. Whether the governor signs it or not, I don't know, but I would assume he will. But, I mean, it was a bad bill to start with, and all the groups came together and hammered out something that's hopefully workable, should be, but it's left it up to the districts to do it themselves, put their own policy together.
It was a major journey, a rough journey. This is probably the cleanest.
One thing I think is important, if this, in fact, you know, requires us to promulgate policy, I think it's important that, you know, we just heard about 21st Century Skills and a technology-rich environment, and, you know, you see districts in classes where the class doesn't end when, you know, the bell rings. The class goes on, and it goes on through technology, and that's kind of what you want to foster. You want to foster this love of learning and this ability to go above and beyond. So, we need to be real careful that our policy doesn't just squelch that right off the top because there's obviously some common sense restrictions that you've got to put in place. But at the same time, you don't want to kind of squelch that technology that every student is using already and that we hope to use in the future to improve the way we deliver instruction.
That's a good point. Any other comments on this or any other legislative issues? Okay, moving on to future issues. Any future issues?
I think to make sure we're on the same page on our Saturday meeting at MSBA, I think you expressed it well, that we have a whole 10, well, we have eight minutes to answer questions. I think after Jerry makes, we may not have any questions after his two minutes, he may cover it all. But to know exactly how we're going to operate, I think, would be better than walking in there and trying to figure that out. So, at some point before, it's a week from Saturday.
Right.
We have to be there. So, I don't know how we're going to do it, but.
I think, to kind of preface it, and for those in the audience, is we've been nominated as an outstanding board regarding excellence in governance, which I understand now, there are categories of outstanding boards that will be, this will be awarded at the MSBA conference, and I think discussion around this was, Mr. Lee was going to be presenting the two-minute, the speed, like speed dating. The two-minute presentation, and then with an eight-minute opportunity for them to, I assume, ask questions from the application that's already gone forward. And I would think at this time, the board would just be, if there's any other thoughts on what Mr. Lee might want to punch into his presentation as they've looked at this application, might be a good thing to do. And then, I think, a decision on, obviously, all of us being in attendance at the presentation, but exactly who would participate, who would sit at the table? Because if there's only eight minutes to respond to a question, we're really not sure how that's going to flow. And it may not be something that we can decide tonight from the table, but it, before we go to the meeting next week, I think maybe we could pass along some ideas and thoughts and get a consensus on how we want to do that. Or, Mr. Lee, perhaps you have a preference?
I certainly could, would like some guidance to focus on two minutes because I can't cover that much of what needs to be covered in two minutes. So, you know, I would welcome thoughts from this board as far as what, you know, if you said there's one thing that we need to, what arrow do we need to shoot? What would that be? Because that's about all you're going, that's about the only shot you're going to get in the presentation, and after that, it's a free-for-all for questions for the panel. And whoever that panel, I don't know, I don't have much input on the panel side of it, but at least the two minutes, I would certainly like guidance as to where you want to, what arrow do you want to shoot on that one to get the biggest bang for the buck?
I had an idea, having served on the Missouri School Board's Board of Directors, you get an idea of how other boards operate and the tools that they have at their fingertips or that they've asked for to do their job most effectively and efficiently on behalf of their congregation, that's my other hat I wear. Community. But it's just in passing here, but it talks about our quarterly reports. And I think that is where we are far and away ahead of our colleagues in the state and where we could really give some guidance to other boards about using the data that they have. And, you know, we do, we have made a huge commitment financially and with personnel to provide that data district-wide. But how that data, I mean, there's really, if somebody could help you visualize this and really show the circle of how the data comes from the, you know, to the, from the student, to the teacher, to the site, to the level administrators, and then to the board, and how that cycle, how that cycle really helps us govern the district, I think, might be one way to capture that information. I think the other things that we talk about are important, but as I was trying to think of, okay, having gone through this process before, you know, what makes what we do here in Springfield unique and also applicable to our colleagues, which I think is an important piece of this, that was one thing that stuck out to me.
I think, you know, as I look through here, it, I've been on here a long time, these are things that we've been doing for quite a while. I mean, it's not like, oh, gosh, this is one brand-new thing, piece we've just kind of thrown in here. It's our way we operate. But I think, as Mrs. Twitty and I were discussing before the meeting, you know, maybe another piece would be how we're proactive, such as MCIP 5. When that came out, where, I mean, I don't know if that's proactive or not, but it came out, and our response was, was not just, we don't like it, you know, and so therefore we're against it. It was preparation of staff and everybody to say, now, here's how we'd really like to do that, and based on that response and the things that happened, MCIP 5 doesn't, and I think we had a major impact just based on that. Well, I think that's part of governance on how legislatively, or this happened to be MCIP 5 is a good, to me, is a good example because it was just, it should be fresh.
And I don't think there's any hesitation from this board. Once we heard that this was rolling out, we didn't want to be a participant, we wanted to be a leader, and.
I think governance.
I think that's part of the governance that, or direction that came from the board, and then staff just, you know, excels at all those other parts, so.
It's amazing how the board has shifted over the years from emotion to data. I really, it's a smarter, the board has become smarter.
Well, you have, you have to at this, when you're governing a district this size, and I think that that's the piece, too, is that if there's a way, like, Mr. Ritter was talking about, you know, kind of our involvement at the state level and our, the impact that we want to make there and have been able to make, and the impact that we're able to make, you know, for our community, you know, that might be a nice tie as well.
I always, you know, you don't know whether you're competing against Blue Eye or Thayer.
We're going against Legos.
And you don't, well, and you don't want it to sound as though it's an issue of superiority, but it gives you, to me, the data-driven piece or part gives you the confidence to govern rather than I think or I happen to believe. It can absolutely validate and it gives you a comfortable place to be if you have the data to make decisions, so.
Well, it certainly helps make tough decisions, which do, I mean, we all have things that we are tied to or emotional, have tied emotions to, but when the data and support it, it's much easier to, yeah. Okay, well, that helps a bunch. That's about four minutes.
That's about 20 minutes.
And then, maybe over the next week, we can decide who might sit and answer questions.
Maybe we forget what those award-winning speech and debate kids to go up there and give that presentation.
I'd buy that.
That number one in the country.
Yeah, really.
I think it'd be good to have a conversation, if I may, to decide who's going to be up there, because who's going to be there Saturday?
Well, I'm assuming that our president would be seated and, of course, Mr. Lee be presenting. I think the biggest concern was with eight minutes, other than us being there as supporting cast of characters, just the cast, that, how we want that to roll out. And I think if we can discuss it tonight, fine, but I don't know if we come to any definitive.
Who's going to be there? That's my only question.
Oh, I'm going to be there.
And you're going to be there Saturday? Okay, so everybody will be there, okay.
Yeah, we can all be in the room and then.
Okay.
And you don't know the questions that are going to be asked. I mean, it's a free-for-all.
I think it's just focusing and honing in on our message of what we want them to leave with because there is a lot in here, and, you know, I mean, I think if we can really identify those pieces that make us very unique is, will help us.
And I think your point is well-taken, that a lot of the districts talk about data, but they're not data-driven, and they're not using it what we would consider the data or the depth of data that can drill down to get, to help make the decisions. But, I mean, I mean, it's, exactly. And so, everybody thinks that it's there, but that haven't quite got to the point that we are with respect to data.
I do like the idea of the MCIP response, MCIP 5 response, and I think that, if you can connect the two in two minutes, if you can, better stay with the one, focus.
Anything else on this? If not, are there any other issues, items to come before the board?
I just want to mention one thing. This, I had an opportunity last week to attend a dual enrollment banquet. I think it was just a reminder for me, although that's an important aspect, one of the many things that our teachers do in the district, but this was a group of dual enrollment teachers that were just visiting about the students and the capability that the students have to leave high school with enough credits to start as sophomores in college. And what a great benefit that is to students and to their families because many times that tuition's at a reduced amount. But anyway, the, just a reminder that our teachers work very hard to prepare and plan for those dual enrollment classes, and I just wanted to send a thank you out to them. There were many there that were talking about, you know, what all they do and what they're required to do because their education requires a little more, an advanced degree in the content area as well as the rest of the curriculum and instruction. So, it was just a really neat reminder to me, one of the very great things that we provide for our students. In Springfield schools, teachers are willing to go the extra mile and get that additional education and then do that extra work for those kids.
Thank you for that. Any other?
I had a question this week sent to Dr. Ritter on technology for administrators out in the buildings, and the answer from Mrs. Kissinger, because that's her area, was historically, the sites are responsible for administrators purchasing their own technology, which, I mean, that's fine if that's what they've done, but as a reminder to me that, you know, the technology budget came, or they discussed, it was discussed and it was cut back, and whether it was included or not included, that, you know, if historically that's the way they do it, I'm not so sure I agree with history there, you know. I'm not so sure if we're going to use data, we have to have up-to-date. And if, you know, if administrator may choose not to update their technology based on some other need in their building, and then they can't use the data, but I'm sure the budget for technology, they had to cut their budget like everybody else did and not be able to do the things that they would have liked to have done. And I think then, as a board member, I understand there's a whole bunch of things not done, but then what effect does that have? And we sit up here and talk about our learning model and technology and data. And if your computer, I mean, I know if somebody's computer crashed, they would probably do something to make sure they got a computer. I mean, I understand they wouldn't say, ah, tough luck. But it would, it seemed to me that would be imperative that administrator have as much update with their, you know? So I just think as a board member, sometimes when there, we have to cut at different places. And, but for me then to understand what I'm approving and not approving, and then say, ah, technology, yeah, we're, we're doing that. We understand its place and we understand it and the whole learning thing. And then I'm really not aware of the fact that what I voted on. I think there need, I want a little more discussion during the budget process of what not, was not included, what impact that's going to have. So I'm aware of that. And that's, we probably still would have done that, but I'm, I'm, it just keeps coming back that we, we're talking about these things and we know what has that, what we really need to have. And, and we can't do everything, we only have a certain amount of money. But as a board member, then I need to understand that, that just isn't going to, it isn't going to happen. And I shouldn't have an expectation then of that happening.
Any other comments?
Just want to remind the board about November 7th with the APQC. And that'll be at TEFT. Am I right, Ms. Kissinger, it's at TEFT on the 7th?
The 7th is here.
Oh, it's here. It's here, I'm sorry. That'll be here.
That's the regional meetings?
That'll be, no, that'll be the large group for the APQC, the one-day awareness session, I would call it.
November 3rd, we're hosting, isn't it November 3rd, we're hosting the MSBA regional meeting? Is that going to be at the Early Childhood Center?
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, that looks like all. And as always, take a look at the financial and operations report, really. And be sure and post your plus deltas. And at this time, we vote to go into an executive session? Second?
Second.
Goodbye, Ms. Callen, second by Mr. Lee. Oops, I'm not on that page. Okay, meeting's adjourned, thank you.